Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for May. Joy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon? Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter? Are you here? I know you're here. Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, we'll go right into it with a presentation for Teacher Appreciation Week. Do we have Kathy on?
No, I'm going to read a statement on behalf of Kathy Meyer and ONEA regarding Teacher Appreciation Week. And as part of Teacher Appreciation Week, Tuesday, May 5th is recognized as National Teacher Day. Although it's a bit harder to thank our teachers in person at this time, ALATHA NEA wants educators to know that their dedication to student success, passion for excellence in the classroom, and compassion for their community is not going unnoticed. This quarter, you saw teachers across the state of Kansas, and especially in the ALATHA School District, focus that dedication, passion, and compassion in creative ways to meet all students' social and emotional health and academic success. During this week, stop and think of an educator that made a difference in your life and thank them. If you're on social media, use the hashtag #ThankATeacher. If you can write your name, hashtag #ThankATeacher. If you can think outside the box, #ThankATeacher. And if you followed your dreams, #ThankATeacher. And those hashtags will be available on our website with the agenda as well.
That's great. I know we are certainly so fortunate to have amazing teachers in this district. It has shown more than ever, as we have asked them to reimagine what their work looks like. And I'm just so proud to have them, you know, personally, I can just say that even for my senior in high school, you know, the thing that has stuck out to me more than anything is that as her teachers are reaching out to her and trying to keep her engaged and involved, the thing that keeps coming back over and over is, "I miss you guys. I care about you guys. Let me know if there's anything that I can do for you." And I think that more than anything really sums up sort of the culture that we have here in ALATHA. And I'm just so thankful for that. So, well said. All right, moving along, action items. Pretty short list here. Does anyone have any questions or things that they would like to pull off for further discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve action consent items 3.01 through 3.04 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Geary, second by Mrs. Felter.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
All right, moving into section four, bids, contracts, and agreements. I know I've got a couple of questions. Was hoping if we could get just a quick update on the Safe and Secure Schools Grant. Would be my main one. And then any other board members that have questions. And I love Mr. Geary's rotating high school hats. So don't think that that's gone unnoticed, sir.
Yes, I did want to mention throughout this, I will be in support of the Class of 2020 rotating hats through all five high schools that I do have. So start with ALATHA North, and here we are, Sporting Falcons.
I love it.
I would like John to talk a little bit about 4.06.
Yeah, if we can also get some discussion around 4.04 in terms of timeline to have that technology rolled out to all the buildings as well.
Any other questions? I'm going to, I will go ahead and talk about 4.06, which is on the Middle School and Elementary One-to-One Initiative. But I'm going to let Dr. McMullin address the other questions first.
Okay, I believe the first question was around the Safe and Secure's grant. Okay. Yes. We are in the second year of the Kansas State Department of Education offering their Safe and Secure Schools Grants. And really, it's a 50-50 grant. So the districts must match the funds up to $500,000 as the cap. So 250 from the state and 250 from the district. As a quick reminder, last year in 1819, our two areas of focus was our crisis communication moving from analog to digital within our radio systems, which provided us a much more better coverage and we could link in with public safety and others. And then the second piece, which was a big piece of that, was our new visitor management system, Raptor, which we have now implemented in all of our buildings. And that's become our new norm in terms of visitor management. This year, our two areas of focus, the first one is Nightlock Secondary Lock System. And that is for going to be installed in all of our elementary schools, on all of our classroom doors, as well as in our middle and high schools, selected classrooms, specifically some of our classrooms, students with special needs. And really, it's just a simple locking mechanism. That's a pin that is adhered to the door and it drops into a plate in the floor and really allows an additional barrier for students in the event of a lockdown. It's a very sturdy device, can withstand up to 2,000 pounds of pressure. And we feel that that will enhance our Alice and specifically lockdown protocol at the elementary school with frankly, our most vulnerable populations. And then the second piece of this year's grant was our safety systems upgrade. And we're starting that cycle of needing to replace the camera systems in our high schools. ALATHA North High School had our oldest system, and so we focused there. Camera replacements, new software and technology integration, last bolt locking systems and two new servers. And so thankful to have this grant and these matching funds from the state have been very beneficial and really allowed us to focus on four key areas the last two years.
And then the next question was regarding Raptor Technologies.
Okay, and Raptor, as I mentioned, was purchased last year through the Safe and Secure Schools Grant. And we have implemented that in all of our high schools and middle schools. And we're starting the elementary. We had some of them up and running, and then COVID shut us down. And so we will be able to do that still this spring and summer and then start next school year with all of our schools up and running with Raptor. But a reminder that Raptor is a visitor management system where any visitors to the building scan their government-issued ID, and it runs against the National Sex Offender Registry and then prints out a badge with their picture and where they are heading and time and all those things. And so a lot of work was done with our community leaders, especially in our Hispanic community, to really get the word out on the why and the benefits of this and really had great feedback from our community. And frankly, at our secondary schools, it's already just another piece of how we do business. It's the new norm. And so we're excited to get it up and running in all of our elementaries. I know we've had, we piloted it at Canyon Creek Elementary, and again, very good feedback there. So excited to start next school year with that system in all of our buildings.
Dr. McMullin, how many years is that grant? Is this the last year? Do we have?
You know, it's a great question. We don't know. It's a yearly grant. And so we're waiting to see if, hopeful that the state will roll it out again next year. And then between Brent Keiger, myself, and our leadership team can really pinpoint what our next areas of focus would be, should we be able to get this grant again next year. But there's no word quite yet as to whether that's going to be out there or not.
Thanks. Dr. McMullin, I had a question for you. It may not necessarily be around the grant. But did we end up putting in security or cameras at the activity complexes?
We did, yes. We did that just this past year.
Okay.
And it's primarily just in our football stadiums. And then we have some by the concession stands and other areas at both. But yes.
Okay.
Both.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Okay, very happy to talk about the One-to-One Initiative that's on the agenda this evening. This agenda item is actually about nine months earlier than we had originally anticipated. But that's due to the situation we found ourselves in over the last six weeks with the COVID-19. Our original plan was to run some pilot schools in the fall with a couple of our middle schools in transitioning from iPad to laptops as part of our movement also next year to look at how we would roll out a one-to-one initiative with the elementary. If you'll remember, the elementary is a two-to-one. And the idea is not necessarily that elementary students, particularly K4, would every day be bringing an iPad home, but it would be available to be used for students during school time. But we also know that under our current circumstances, as we work to develop the Continuous Learning Plan, one of the challenges, particularly for many of our elementary students, is access to technology. So this would allow us, should this happen again in the fall or later, that we'd be able to address at least that portion of the issue we had in support of our elementary students by being able to go one-to-one across the district. So, you know, our plan was to do a pilot, some professional development and those types of things. Because of the current situation, we looked at this and feel like we need to go ahead and move forward. We've done a good assessment. Mr. Flenick and his team, along with representatives from across the district, have actually been studying this issue for about the last six to seven months prior to our current events. So this is fit into our master plan. We're just going to move it up a little faster than we had anticipated. The cost for the program is, will be paid for by the technology bond funds that were established for that reason. Because we're, we'll be moving to the Dell laptops at the middle school, the network infrastructure that you all helped put in place over the last 18 months, the staff's knowledge, all the drivers, all those types of things that we've already set up through the high school, will be able to transition very easily for the middle school equipment. So we do not anticipate any additional infrastructure costs beyond what we're prepping here, being able to provide that support within current staffing. So it dovetails well with where we were going. It's just going to be a little quicker than we had anticipated. The cost difference between an iPad and the computers, they're almost identical. So that's, I know a question I get asked a lot, or is that more expensive? That price point has come down enough on the PCs that they're very comparable. So we feel there are some advantages for our middle schools with the keyboards and then being able to carry those devices on up to the high school and be getting that transition. And the iPads are a great fit for our elementary students who are already used to using them in classrooms, but it's on a small group or a shared basis. And now we'll be able to go one-to-one for the elementary. So I think it puts us in a great position, not only where we want it to be, but in case we continue to deal with issues in the fall or after in the future, if we have to look at virtual options for our students again.
Mr. McKeon, did you have something?
No, I just was thinking, I talked to John earlier today, and obviously not knowing what funding may be like after July 1st and what it looks like going forward. But obviously, this is a big expenditure, but just wanting the public to know and everybody to know that this is the 2006 bond issue is how this one is being paid.
It's a great point. Other questions or comments? On any of these items? If not, I'd seek a motion.
I would move to approve action items 4.01 through 4.06 as presented this evening.
Second.
Hello?
Second.
Did you get him? I did. I think Shannon, are you frozen?
I think he is.
Well, we'll go ahead. Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe? Okay, Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Joe, you want to take it?
Um, yeah. So should we go ahead or should we give Shannon a second to see if he can fix that? I don't mind going ahead and I, with 5.01, what do you guys think?
I had to totally reboot mine a while ago. That's why I wasn't able to talk during roll call.
We'll work on getting him back. So if you want to go ahead, that'd be great.
Okay, so moving on to action other, 5.01, Kansas Association of School Board Nominating Committee Appointment. Mr. Geary, I believe you were at this for the last couple of years.
Yeah, I mentioned to Shannon, I know he did it the three years prior. I'm happy to take on my third year here. It's a good way to meet other school board folks across the state and happy to do it again.
I would cease nominations.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Sorry, guys.
All right.
What's up, Joe?
It was a coup.
Am I out?
No, you're back on the nominating committee.
You got nominated. Just a question, are you a yes on that last vote?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
All right.
Now we need motion two to appoint.
I move to appoint Brian Geary to serve on the KASB Nominating Committee for 2020.
We need to take a role on the cease nominations.
Yep.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. That's all right. Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
And now to appoint Brian Geary to serve. It's been motion by Felter.
Second.
I missed the second.
Mr. McKeon.
Thank you. Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would also remind everyone that I believe that we are going to be coming up in the next couple of months here on our organizing organizational meeting, where there will be plenty of opportunities for you to get involved with lots of great organizations that we have standing memberships with. So just wanted to throw that out there. You can see a ton of future action items. So I would encourage you, if you've got interest in any of those or questions, please forward those on to Mr. Allison or others. Information written, as always, the Head Start Director's Report, and then Parent Teacher Conference Totals, which is, I look pretty similar to what we've seen in the past. Anyone's got any questions on those, speak now. Or other topics for discussion from board members.
I was just going to commend Kim and their crew over at Head Start. I've been on that Public Policy Council meeting group now for a few years. And they're doing a great job in this crazy timeline, like a lot of people are, but just continuing to engage their students and families. And I mean, it's the community leaders that are involved with that. If anybody that's ever served on that, it's a pretty big group of people. And they've continued to keep their, their folks, they serve very in tune with a lot of the community representatives that are there. And they've done a great job. And so I commend Kim and their crew for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that I've served on that as well. And it's, you learn so much. It's super rewarding. And the people that are involved, we've got a great community. And that is in and of itself kind of a really cool community. So if you've got the capacity, when that comes up and you want opportunity to see what that is like, I would highly encourage it. So.
Yep.
Others?
I was just going to take a second, Shannon, to echo kind of what you started the meeting with on Teacher Appreciation Week. And not necessarily as a board member, but also as a parent of three kids in the district. I appreciate the teachers in the ALATHA School District and how hard they've worked and how much they care and how much just positive impact they have on my kids and so many other kids in the district.
Yeah, well said. Others? Seeing none, Mr. Allison, do you have comments?
I do. I have a couple this evening. First, following that same thread, thanking our teachers for their hard work and their continued resiliency and adaptability as we work through this, as we think about Teacher Appreciation Week. Since our last meeting, we also missed National Principal Day. So again, phenomenal work being done by our building leaders as they've worked with our teachers to move us forward and keep our students engaged and address the social, emotional learning of our students as well. And we know this is hard on families and our students as well as our staff. And the last is a special thank you as we're rolling into about week six of our nutrition services staff stepping up and preparing now over, you know, 3,500 meals or for 3,500 students. And that's multiple meals that we're doing twice a week and their continued hard work and dedication to make all that happen. So it's really that whole team of folks that are working to provide what they need and doing what they need to do for our students and our community as a whole in some really tough and difficult times. So appreciate all of them. As we take a look at our planning moving forward, we've got a couple key kind of next steps that I know everyone's anxious for answers around on where we're going with our summer programs and the various camps and things that are part of a typical summer. And we're very close to being able to announce what that will look like. We've made a decision not to do it in bits and pieces. But once we had really that kind of comprehensive ability to put information out that we do that, and I anticipate that in no later than in the next week, so folks have a better understanding. Part of the reason that we're working through is not only because we have to work with some of the other area school districts in some of those efforts, but the landscape keeps changing. And we know that the governor has put out the phases. I do believe there's a misconception as folks saw the four phases. They looked at dates that were attached to those and assumed that meant that the phase is over. What that really means is the phase won't, that the next phase won't start until the date that's listed there. So it's based on what's happening with testing and cases and those types of things. And that the governor will then reissue, or Johnson County for that matter. As we move from one phase to the next, there'll be a formal declaration. We're moving from phase one to phase two based on that information. So because of that, as we're planning, we're wanting to make sure we provide good leeway between what the phases would allow us to do or not do based on the governor's plan, which Johnson County has also adopted as their plan moving forward. Because the one thing we can't do is ramp up and announce and say, you know what? We're going to start sports camps or credit recovery courses. And then a phase be extended and say, nope, sorry, we're going to have to wait another week to do that. So it's part of why we're carefully planning, trying to look at what we think. And when nobody really knows what the answer is, what is a logical, safe, prudent amount of time to monitor how those phases go and to make sure that our community knows what we're able to communicate here fairly soon is always subject to change based on the phases. So some of our communication is going to be in reference to, we'll be able to do this when we get to phase three or the phase out time period versus necessarily a date. It's also forcing us to look at extended school year and what we typically do for some of our elementary students in the summer program and those types of things. And one of our big concerns is wanting to guarantee some level of service and what's the best fit for each of our student groups. So balancing all of that, there's not one size fits all answer. But we will have more information hopefully in the next couple of days, but definitely by this time next week as we're taking a look at that. The other question I get is around, what happens if we can't start school like we normally do in the fall? And as we're focused on trying to wrap up this school year, we're beginning to have those conversations and planning. The difficult part is we don't know what the rules are going to be as we approach fall. And they literally, about every 48 hours, we get a new change, whether it's from the state or it's through the governor's office or the Department of Education or Johnson County Health. And we're, as we've talked about, we have to pivot at different time periods. So we're having to look at different options. We'll be talking about that more as we approach June and July and have a better feel. What I can tell you is we know that the format we used to finish the year can't be the same format we use for the beginning of a school year. We're in different places. Toward the end of a school year, we're doing less introduction of new material and working more toward mastery. We know that the rigor is going to look different. We also have to balance like we did with our current Continuous Learning Plan as a reminder that almost a third of our students didn't have access to technology and potentially even more did not have access to the internet. So whatever we do is going to have to be balanced. Your approval of helping us move forward with the one-to-one will help us address some of the technology issues. We're going to have to address how we utilize that and some of those access issues, which gives us the next month or two to plan. So can't tell you what it's going to look like. We've still got that incredible team. It's over 1,000 teachers now that have been engaged with others in developing our Continuous Learning Plan. There's ongoing conversations with teachers and others that have been involved in our current plan on how does that look different? What have we learned? We know we've learned quite a bit, some positive things, some things that we know we would change moving forward. So when we're capable and able to address that with more detail, we will do that. So again, I hope everybody just will maintain their patience as we work through a lot of unknowns. But we also want to make sure that But we also want to make sure that when we communicate, we're able to communicate clearly and, and, uh, have details for folks. So like I said, uh, where we're going to be for, for the month of June, we will have that information for you here in the next week or so. And I anticipate that's kind of how things will roll for us is we'll, we'll announce in June what July is going to look like and, and like that, so that we can, uh, address the, the changing landscape as, as we move forward. So, um, that's, uh, that's the focus right now. And again, uh, thanks to all of our teachers, administrators and others that, uh, are working so hard to make sure we finish out the school year strong, take care of our students and then, uh, roll up their sleeves and plan for next year, which we hope looks more like we're used to, but i- if it doesn't, we'll be ready and, uh, ready to serve our students. And that concludes my remarks tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. I appreciate all of the planning that's going into this. Just, um, you know, we have to have plans A, B, C and D, maybe E, uh, and I appreciate the fact that we're ahead of the curve and, and trying to, to do those things. So my understanding is we do not need next executive session tonight. So, um, with that, we are adjourned. Everybody stay safe and wash your hands.
Thank you.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.